Stand up for the flag of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation under our indivisible liberty and justice.
So we have a couple of folks online tonight, so we're gonna have to do the roll call for attendance and voting.
So if we don't have anyone online, this will change, but right now, we're gonna assume we've got people online, so attendance and all votes will be done through roll calls. So when your name is called, board members, please cast your vote with the three available options of yes approved, no disapproved, or abstain. So board members that are online, please make sure you've got your volume turned up so you can hear us and we can hear you. I'm gonna quickly go through to see if we've got any board members online, and it looks like we do. So Christine, start with. David G.
Here.
Jade?
Here.
Hold on Jade, we're trying to hear your audio, so hang on just a sec. Yep, Jade, can you try again?
Here.
Oh, we got you this time, thank you Jade. Annie?
Here.
Tyler? Yeah, we'll watch for him. He's coming. Oh, he's coming, okay, we'll wait for him.
Sorry, my work computer crashed right before I joined, I'm here.
Good, so we know you're here and we can hear you, thank you. Christine?
Here.
Kathy?
Here.
Patty?
Here.
Rebecca?
Yeah.
Betty?
Here.
Sean?
Here.
Kelty?
Here.
David T.
Here.
Our student reps, Esme?
Here.
And Eric?
Here.
Thank you guys. Everyone's in attendance with two online.
Perfect, thank you. So good evening, everyone, and thank you all for coming tonight. Before we get started, I'd like to remind everyone of our agreed upon core values, and those are integrity, perseverance, family, respect, collaboration, and trust. These values support our mission of being a caring school community dedicated to excellence, and they also support our vision of being a safe, dynamic learning community where people of all ages will think, aspire, and participate as responsible citizens in an ever-changing global society. So as you know, this meeting's being held in person and in Zoom, so I just wanna go over a little bit about public participation in citizen comments. Citizen comments that are non-budget related is number four on our agenda tonight. In accordance with RSU 38 policy BEDH, public participation at school board meetings, the following guidelines will be followed. For those attending via Zoom, you'll notice that the microphones will be muted except during the identified portions of public comments at this meeting. Again, that's number four, and then again, at the budget piece, if you want to comment then. If you're viewing on Zoom and you'd like to speak during the public comment times, please use the chat feature to notify Diane McGregor, and she will communicate with me. In-person speakers, if you'd like to speak at either time, during the non-budget time or during the budget time, we ask that you sign up on the sheet setter on that table at the back of the room. All speakers, please identify yourself with first and last name and the town that you live in. Priority will be given to individuals who live or pay taxes in our member communities, immediate family members of enrolled students, and employees of RSU 38. Individuals that do not have one of these direct connections to our district may or may not be given permission to speak at the discretion of the board chair, which is me. We ask that speakers limit their comments to three minutes, and if someone who has a similar view of yours speaks ahead of you, please reference their comment rather than repeat the same ideas. We really wanna hear from all of our stakeholders, and we ask that you be respectful with your constructive comments to the boards. I'd also like to clarify how we address concerns of the public. In accordance with RSU number 38 policy BEDH, we welcome all respectful comments and concerns, and we ask that you not use any derogatory comments or use names of or identifying comments of any district personnel. We cannot discuss specific personnel matters in a public setting, but we can listen to broad concerns that folks may have. All speakers are to address the chair and direct questions or comments to a particular board member only with the approval of the chair. The board will hear and record the comments and questions, but will not debate the matters at this meeting. Board members' questions must be addressed through the chair. Following this meeting, any questions or concerns that came up during the public citizen comments, we will research the issues, we'll gather information on the matter, and at the next board meeting, we'll follow up with information on the issues that you've asked us to. The public is always encouraged to call the superintendent at any time with any issues and concerns. And again, I thank you all for coming tonight. So our first thing on the agenda is our student representative reports. Do we have middle school tonight? Oh, he's hiding behind the podium.
Hi, I'm Carter. So students on the Acadia team are working on developing thesis statements, exploring spelling rules, and reading individual choice books. Grade six students in math are learning about dividing fractions, while seventh graders are applying or using negative numbers in real-life situations, and the eighth graders are learning about functions. Mr. Holman's class is learning about the scientific revolution and the end of the revolutionary war. So down at the art room, the repairs just finished after water damage, so the students have returned to the art room. There are sculpting clay whistles in the art classes, and students in GT art are creating ocean-themed artwork for Arts Night. Also for Youth Art Month, 14 Miranda Cook students' artwork are on display in an art center in Waterville. One student's artwork is on display in Augusta Gallery, and one student's artwork is also on display at the Portland Museum of Art. Student government held a winter carnival-themed dress-up week in an assembly on Friday before the break. So this is where the staff, as well as each of the grades, had a dodgeball competition, and then there was also an "anything you can do, I can do better" student versus staff thing. So that was where they would just, students would challenge a teacher or a staff member and to do a certain competition, and they would do that in front of the whole school. The student government is also continuing to clean and collect and sort to make sure all the clothes in Vicky's boutique over there are ready for restocking. Then on Sebago, they just finished their penny drive, raising over $500 for the food pantry, and they continue to learn about anatomy and fractions. Thank you.
Thank you, Carter, and thank you for that information about everything, especially for the art students that have their art on display at those art centers. That's really awesome, so thank you for sharing that with us.
Hi, I'm Taylor O'Donoghue. In Moose, they are now working on a new theme of Earth and Space and are still planning a field trip in May, so they're really hoping for that. Moxie Falls is starting finals for trimester two, and the new theme will be college and careers. They will be doing argumentative reading and writing. Some classes are more sports and physics-focused, and then there are, of course, college and career classes. On May 25th, Moxie is going to a Sea Dogs game, then visiting either SMCC or USM to learn more about sports and college. In Spanish, they are still working on winter activities and have been reading and listening to books in Spanish to both see the visual and be able to speak more fluently. German is learning time, and they are doing an interview project to learn to answer simple questions in German. They're still working on the Little Red Riding Hood play and are very much hoping to perform it at Arts Night. And music. In chamber choir, they are getting ready to do a performance during Arts Night and are really pushing people to sign up for that.
Thank you, Taylor. Do you have the date for Arts Night? Do you know what day it is?
March 26.
26?
Yeah.
Thank you. Do any of the board members have questions for the middle school reps? Thank you again for gathering all that information, and now we'll hear from our high school reps.
I want to say we need two computers.
Hi, I'm Abigail Allen. So first with Senate. School spirit is kind of the main focus right now. They're working on winter carnival, which is gonna be next week. We have finally finalized all of the games, the spirits days, the rubrics, rules, all of the fun stuff. Student Voice has been trying to finish the black bear cards and are hopefully handing them out very shortly. Wellness and outreach have both been mainly helping with spirits, winter carnival. Well, its main focus has been with the winter carnival dance and helping them finalize stuff for that, and outreach has just been helping out where they can with winter carnival, and they also just finished their coronation sales right before break, which is a little mini fundraiser for Valentine's Day. It's more fun than anything. And then we have a lot of extracurricular stuff going on, so winter sports season have actually come to an end. Pretty much every team had a fairly good season, and spring sports are set to start later this month. One of our lovely sophomores, Thatcher Riley, won Central Maine Athlete of the Week a couple weeks ago. The production of Clue is gonna be setting stage later this month, I believe the week of the 23rd, and their set is actually pretty much done, and tickets actually went on sale tonight. Teen issues, our next Teen Issues Day is coming up on the 22nd as well, and class registration has also started this week, which was really good because we were able to get some new social studies courses out and around, the word about that has gone around. On Friday, junior students that participated in the National History Day contest are going to the regional or state, I can't remember which one it is, competition in Lewiston. And then we had four CATS professionals of the month. They were Shila Woodford, London Putnam, Cassie Tims, and Maya Lad. And then lastly, on, from March 4th through March 20th, we have the sustenance and joy gallery in Reed Field. It's like, it's an art gallery, and it's recent work from Miranda Cook High School like art students, and I believe there's artwork from Sam, right? Yeah, it's dedicated to Sam Sessler, and a lot of his artwork will be in there too. That's it.
Thank you, sir, very much, Abigail. That was a lot of information, that was awesome. Any questions or comments from the board? Kelty?
How do you buy tickets to Clue?
Um, so, yeah, and I think it's gonna be on the website too, and then there's also a Miranda Cook production Instagram page that they have a link in there too.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Great, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is citizen comments. Do we have anybody that has signed up for citizen comments? Hey, Doug Stevens, you would step up to the podium, please.
Hi, I'm Doug Stevens, I'm from Mount Vernon. I have grandchildren in elementary school in Mount Vernon, and I'm a little bit concerned about the email or Facebook message that went around this past week about the students going to school an extra hour next week for the high school and middle school. My concern is my grandchildren are taken care of by a high school student. They get off the bus with her daily, and my wife and I run a business, and I am also going to school myself, and we take care of her elderly parents, and we're wondering how our grandchildren are gonna be taken care of during this time. Both of their parents work, so it's gonna make a real burden on all the townspeople. I know there's a lot of concern. I'm on a committee in Mount Vernon where I hear a lot of concerns from a lot of the people, and I just wanna know how do we fix this? I mean, I know, I know it was done in an effort to not prolong the school year, I totally understand that, but also, it's gonna put a burden on everybody for five days, and how many more snow days are we gonna have this year? We already had another one. Possibly looking at another one for tomorrow. So, I mean, how many weeks are they gonna go to school till 3:30 in the afternoon? Academically, I think that's putting a challenge on these students as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Doug. Is there anyone else? Tara? Unless it's about budget. You sound like the general, so you have to sit down until it's budget. Sorry about that. Okay. Anyone else for citizen comments? Okay, are there any additions or adjustments to the agenda by the superintendent or the board? None? Okay. Now we have a celebration we wanna hear about. So Abby, I think that's you.
Thank you. Abby Hafford, Principal at Manchester Elementary School, and we always are asked if we'll share a celebration. I don't know if it's a celebration, but it's a win, it's a win-win. And I'm not sure, for at least the last three years, we have been having student teachers at Manchester Elementary School. We've had quite a succession of them, primarily they've been UMF students, and they've been asked to come to our school because it's close, it's nearby to Primeton, many of them live locally, and we talked to teachers, and they were willing to share. Manchester has some very veteran teachers that have been there over 30 years, that have a lot of skill, a lot of, you know, tools of classroom management, and it's just like, when you have that, it's great to be able to share that and to teach, and it's very, very refreshing to share with young, informative teachers. They're excited, and they bring back that, you know, the joy of looking at children. And so our teachers, geez, we had, I think last year, we had three or four in the spring and in the fall. This fall, we had three student teachers. This spring, we had, we have a student teacher, there are practicum, different levels, there are practicum students who come several times a week, and then there, we have a student teacher who's there every day for the whole semester in fifth grade. Our teachers have been amazing to accept them, they've greatly benefited them from being there. You've got two adults in the room that really care about the kids, so it really increases the student time, you know, you can live in the small moments and find the joy of teaching again when you do that. And I want you to live in hope because we've had some fabulous teachers that are so well-prepared. I mean, they're in their practicum year, which is like their sophomore year of college, and these kids could probably just walk right out of that classroom and teach, they have rapport with children, they have a desire to be there, so I think that we're hopefully gonna fill our own vacancies by doing this. We really hope have a hand in them, in the formation and the early stages of it. I know that Reed Field just recently hired a student teacher, we had, geez, I think we had him in the 2020 COVID year, and then he was a practicum student at Mount Vernon, and then he's been hired at Reed Field, so we've shared the wealth, but I just wanted to, you know, it's been a nice opportunity for us, and it extends the number of hands we have to meet childrens.
Thank you, Abby, and that is a celebration. So we had the reports in our packet, does anyone have any questions or concerns about any of the reports that were in the packet?
In my report, I had put to be announced TBA for the truancy numbers in February, so I just wanted to give you an update on those. So at the elementary level, we had two new ones in the month of February. At the middle school, we had three new ones, and at the high school, we had two new ones. So again, we seem to be doing well, even though attendance does tend to be challenging as far as the truancy numbers themselves, we're doing well with those, so good work to the principals for following up with all of those.
Anybody else have any questions or comments about any of the reports? And then we have, the committee meetings are outlined for the next dates for those meetings to happen. If they have any questions or comments about that? Oh, yes, and we do have a first read for one of our, more than one. So we have first read for gifted and talented homework and admission of resident students. That's the first read. Any? Go ahead, Dave.
Yes. They looked good. I had some thoughts, that doesn't mean anything should change in the policy, but on mandating homework is, there are thoughts that I have on it that don't say we should change. I didn't think I was that bad. Many of us in the general community, unlike most teachers, I might say, work their day, and then they're done. I rarely bring work home and spend a couple more hours, and they stay at work a couple more hours like they did yesterday, but then. And so I don't get assigned work at home, and it's basically adding another hour to your schedule day. There's a national conversation now about people working late at night, finding that they're losing their homework. And I don't think that happens here, but I know in my days, sometimes the homework was visible. And as you might have guessed, I did not find homework very attractive, which doesn't make it good or bad, it's just let you know I'm coming from the perspective. Now, homework can be, oops, please, sorry. Homework can be, in my perspective, it can be discovery, expansion, enrichment, chance for students or adults from their work to explore their passions and something that, to me, rather than homework being, well, let's get some more work done, how about it being where, like an extra credit thing, if you're gonna spend time at home researching something or exploring something, get credit for it, but rather than being just an assignment that it continues today, as you might guess, I didn't get much of that done, doesn't mean it shouldn't be, and I wouldn't have done better if I had, but, and so, keeping a focus on it being helpful and enriching the students, and maybe not being given just because it's required or is a norm.
Thank you, David. Any else have any comments on any of the policies that we've first reading? Okay, so if you do have any comments, we are meeting on the 7th. Oops, sorry, someone's online. Tyler?
Yeah, I just have a question about what, why we're changing the homework policy? What was the modus behind it?
It's one of those policies that was over five years old, so we are, any policy that that is that old triggers an automatic review, so that's how it kinda rose to the surface, was just because it's been five years since we looked at that policy.
Okay. Else?
I'll just make one comment, it's not, I don't see the original, sometimes we'll do the original version, so we don't have that for this, but during the policy committee meeting, one of the main points that we took out was the prescribed amount of homework per grade, it was very rigid, so we wanted to have that be more fluid and not have, say, third grade do half an hour, fourth grade do 40 minutes, it was very cut and dry, so we wanted there to be more flexibility in that as well.
And the current one is on the back of the, oh, it is? Yeah. Thank you for that information, Annie. Okay, good? Okay, moving on to our action items. Do I have a motion for approval of special RSU, not special RSU, special RSU 38 board minutes from February 15?
I move, we approve the approval of special RSU number 38 board minutes of February 15, 2023 meeting.
Second.
Any discussion?
So voting is up, Christine, you're first. David G.
Yes.
Jade?
Abstained.
Annie?
Yes.
Tyler?
Abstained.
Christine?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Patty?
Abstained.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Betty?
Yep.
Sean?
Yes.
Kelty?
Yes.
David T.
Yes.
Eric?
Abstained.
And Esme?
Abstained. Excuse me, Jade, I need to abstain, I wasn't actually at that meeting, I thought we were talking about the regular, they're all specials, so I thought we were talking about the second special.
Sounds good, thank you.
So nine approved, so it does, yeah. And I'm just gonna ask those people that abstained, is that because you were not at the meeting? Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. So do I have a motion to approve the board meetings for the regular board meeting on February 15?
I move that we approve the minutes of the regular board meeting on February 15.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
Alrighty. Christine?
Yeah.
David G.
Yes.
Jade?
Abstained.
Annie?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
I lost my place, sorry.
I think it's me.
Christine, yeah, sorry. I do not have my glasses tonight, I'm gonna pay the price, I know it, so I apologize. Kathy?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Kelty?
Yeah.
David T.
Yes.
Esme?
Abstained.
And Erin?
Yes.
Well, yes. And again, I'm assuming that those of you that abstained is because you were not at the meeting, right? Okay, do I have a motion to accept the donations?
I move we accept the donations.
Second.
Any discussion? Those are in your packet, so. Hearing none, we'll vote.
Alright. Christine?
Yeah.
David G.
Yes.
Jade?
Yes.
Annie?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yeah.
Betty?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Kelty?
Yeah.
David T.
Yes.
Esme?
Yes.
And Erin?
Yes.
It is unanimous.
So is there a motion to consider overnight travel to the Maine Allstate Music Festival in Orono?
I move, we consider overnight travel for Maine Allstate Music Festival, Orono, five eighteen to twenty.
So any discussion? Hearing none?
Kristen?
Yeah.
David G?
Yes.
Jade?
Yes.
Annie?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Kelty?
Yeah.
David T?
Yes.
Esme?
Yes.
And Eric?
Yes.
Again, unanimous.
Can I say something just super fast and maybe it should have been in discussion? Um, just the huge thank you to Dan Gilbert for doing this because it is so awesome, formative and life-changing for my child. And I'm so excited it's happening.
Great. It's nice that it's back, yeah, it's really nice, so.
So do I have a motion for consideration of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school calendar?
I move that we consider the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school calendar.
Any discussion? So I did have a question, Jay. Because of the situation that we're in right now, with graduation and the last day of school and we're making up snow days and all that, you know. I just wanna make sure that we don't get stuck into that same trap again and it looks, so is it true that we cannot go five days beyond graduation?
Right.
For the rest of the whole district, cannot go?
Graduation needs to be within five days of the last student day.
So looking at this calendar for next year, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
We have, we have an updated one in your packets that adjusts based on the, um, I could tell you it's seventeen in your packets. So we adjusted all of that at the bottom.
So I just wanna make sure we don't get into the same, okay, so if graduation's on the second or the fourth, I mean the fourth and the last student day is the eleven, one, two, three, four, five, okay. Good. I just didn't wanna get into the same situation at the moment right now.
Sean?
So I just wanna be clear, cause there's a lot of stuff floating around up there. So I have a multiple, you know, series of questions. So first thing I wanna be clear to understand is the reason why we can't change graduation date is because of Civic Center, is that a fact?
That is correct, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Well, before you go any further, I just have a little follow-up question. Have we already paid money towards them, like a down payment or something?
Yeah, when we, yeah, when we do graduation for like this year, we're basically putting a deposit for next year to reserve that spot. Um, so that's kinda how it works. If we don't wanna use the Civic Center, then that's a game changer at that point. Um, but we, you kinda do it year to year and the Civic Center kinda saves your spot for you unless you say, no, I don't want, so, okay, yeah.
Can I, go ahead.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
A follow-up thing about what whoever just said, um, so if is, the rule is only about the Civic Center though, right? So like, I hear what you're saying that we are, we're going to do, graduation will be at the Civic Center this year, twenty twenty-three, and that puts us in for next year.
If we want, if, right.
Do we want to?
Well, that's, yeah.
Yeah.
So if we don't use the Civic Center, in the past, we've had graduation on a Saturday or Sunday. Um, I think typically it's been a Sunday afternoon. This is what it's been. So if that was the case, then you'd be looking at more than likely graduation being June nine. Again, I would probably need to get with Michelle and the other high school, uh, just to make sure to confirm that date. Uh, but it would be the night, more than likely would be the night. Um, again, there's pros and cons, using the, we went over to the Civic Center because it's a bigger space. We have ample seating. Um, uh, the two graduations we've done there so far, people have been very impressed with because there's a clear view and they do the streaming as part of a package. So anyone that's not there can see and it's clear and all that kinda stuff. If we were to come back to the gym here, then again, we're looking at more limited seating. Uh, gonna be honest in saying it this way, cause a lot of you guys have been there, the hot sweaty gym on a Sunday afternoon when it's eighty-five degrees in there and everyone's sweating and everyone's wearing gowns and all that kinda stuff. The view isn't gonna be as, as good as it has been and we don't have the streaming capacity to put it online. I don't know if we wanna do that, but just like it was changed because of the pandemic, it was very successful, so that's why we kind of wanted to continue it, but the disadvantage of that is it does box us into a date, so um, that is, that's the truth there, it boxes us in with the dates, so.
Did you have one?
Yes, so it all has to do with the schedule. Is it true that there is transportation for all students with the extended hours? Cause that is a rumor that's floating out there, that was told to our kids by teachers in the middle school today. So I wanna be very clear on the record that it matters to the kids.
Yeah.
My phone was blowing up when I was in the middle of caring.
We are absolutely going to have transportation. Um, and what we'll do, Kelly was out today, but I will meet with her tomorrow and we will have something out either tomorrow afternoon or Friday morning. So that the transportation is all worked out and all that kinda stuff. There will be a few changes, but it'll be like bus numbers and things like that, so.
And then the last thing, well, you already asked the question, the Civic Center is being, so I have nothing to do with this time.
Any other questions or comments on the proposed calendar? Oh, somebody online. Jade?
I just have a quick question, kind of in reference to what one of the parents had brought up earlier was I don't know if it's even possible, but is there a possibility of kids that would be unsupervised? Could we have them maybe transported to the high school gym? And then they can transport home with their siblings that would normally be watching them? I just feel like we're kind of putting this on families. Is there a way that we can brainstorm to help relieve some of that burden? I know it would be like asking some staff to help out and stuff like that, but I don't, I don't, I'm just trying to brainstorm an option that might be helpful. Because we don't wanna leave families in a bind where they have literally nobody to watch younger kids.
Esme?
Um, I know, so next week, we have, like you said, winter carnival. So that last hour of the day for us is winter carnival, so the gym will be packed completely. I don't know if like the cafeteria would be open, but the gym will be completely filled with like the entire school, everything.
Thank you for letting us know that, it's important.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Patty.
One, one more question about, um, so there was also concern from parents that I spoke to about um, the particular dates that were chosen. Um, and I know that you explained it to me, why you chose them. But maybe so that everybody else knows, um, because they were, you know, they felt it was really abrupt.
Yeah.
You know, so they didn't have notice to let their work know, um.
So we actually started working on this before vacation. I had to bring the calendar um, to the board first for the change. Once the board approved the change, then I had to apply for a waiver from the Department of Education. The person that does the waivers was out all of last week, which was a vacation week. So I called Monday, it was about, I think, one thirty. I got in touch with the person and said, look, I need to inform people. You need to tell me what's, like, if I can do this or not now, cause I need to get this out. So we moved as quick as we could, but some of it was out of our control in terms of notification. If we could have gotten it out sooner, we absolutely would have done that, um, for sure, so. Um, but we had started working on using that week of the, of the sixth, or excuse me, of the sixth, I'm looking at the wrong month. Yeah, I'm looking at the wrong calendar, yeah, this is the sixth, right? Yeah, this is the sixth. Um, so we were hoping, um, and one of the other things that I didn't mention to you was there was rumors that we were probably gonna have a storm, which we did yesterday. So we were really trying to try to take care of the middle school, high school day first as a priority. So then whatever we did was gonna be district-wide going forward and would have a little bit less of an impact on families, so. Um, yeah, so it's complicated, it's not easy, and there's a lot of things that didn't kinda break our way, so to speak, there. Um, as far as that goes, so.
Anyone else? So, go ahead, Patty.
Well, I'm back on the Civic Center and graduation in, as it's, um, related to approving the calendar. I feel like it's hard to approve. I don't know how to weigh those two things of what's, um, and I know we need to, but I don't know if that's something that needs to happen now. But if weighing the two things of, do we wanna have it, uh, graduation at the Civic Center and it had, as it has been the last few years for the reasons you just said? Two years, or do we wanna change the way we're doing, um, snow days at the end of the year kinda thing? And I think that deserves a bigger conversation. I don't know what that conversation is for now or not for now, but I don't know if I could like approve the calendar without that conversation, do you know what I mean? That's what, that's what I, that's what I think.
So once the calendar is approved by us, we could come back and change it.
Absolutely.
If we wanted to. So we could, if we approved it tonight as it is, and then we have more conversation, which I agree, I think we need more conversation around that. Um, then we could change the calendar. Any, any other questions from the board? Comments?
So so we're adding March from Paul Minister, trying to remember.
The workshop day in March.
Fifteen, that's, that's now
Yes.
Yeah.
March fifteenth is now a school day.
Yeah.
March seventeen.
March seventeen, seventeen.
Oh, I'm looking at next?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I did.
Sorry, I was looking at, I was looking at the wrong one. Okay, I was like, this isn't that number, that's why. It's still the wrong one. I have two wrong ones.
I have, I mean, snow days that we had so far.
So we've had, um, four.
We had four.
Thank you. Yeah. Four plus we had the, the closure, October thirty, where it's for just the middle school and high school, so. But we're up to four at this point.
So just a question I was gonna ask, cause I have two wrong calendars. Uh, is, there's no way to push it out a little later to buy more time for parents to get to their office? I mean, I'm sure
You mean the date, the dates of the, of the extra hour?
Yeah. No, not the extra hour, the full day, cause
Oh, the full day.
That's a full day, that's a huge burden, even trying to find childcare and stuff.
That was gonna be a workshop day anyway, but now it's a school day.
Sorry.
Yeah.
That's why it's a workshop.
Yeah, right. Patty?
Oh, I was gonna say, I think the other issue, I know I'm caught the elephant in the room, but it's how we're gonna handle if we go over next year. Because we still don't know how we're gonna handle those days, and we probably will. So then there's the question of how do we take care of those days to make up the being compliant, and that's obviously a different discussion, but that's gonna, a lot's gonna hinge on how we take care of those days that we miss, that we can make them up and try to do best.
Patty, then Sean?
Oh, I was gonna ask what I feel like I always ask, which is, I'm, so here we are and we have this draft calendar for twenty-three, twenty-four. And administrators and the teachers' union rep people, everybody's seen it and everybody approves of it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Sean?
But if I'm hearing, if, what I heard correctly last time I'm here tonight is, is if we didn't do the graduation at the Civic Center, you could change the graduation date if you need to. Other schools do that, that is common, right? If I did some research, that's common.
That's right, yeah, yeah. Oh, absolutely.
That is common for schools to change their graduation.
Right. But for this year, we've already paid.
No, but I'm saying for, if we're proving next year's calendar.
Right, right.
Like, we need to make that decision at some point.
Right, which is what I was saying before, if we wanted to, we could vote to accept this calendar as it is. And then have more discussion about graduation, and then we might wanna change the calendar, or we could just not vote on it tonight, we could table it and do you have to have this for, at a certain time for Kat? I know Kathy likes to have these.
Um, yeah, um, as long as we have some sort of vote before, I mean, if, at the very latest, we would have to make a decision by May, I would say, but I think we could work, uh, March or April um, to give us time to talk and do some research or whatever. I don't think there's a set date, but typically this is the January, so that's why it's here, so.
Kelty?
So much like what Patty's talking about, is that seems to be the first step, it's figuring out the graduation piece. And then everything else will kind of come together after that. So maybe we should pull the graduates and families and see what their purpose is because that matters. Um, another survey, but these are going well, and that might determine how this goes.
Sean?
Well, no disrespect, Kelty, but I disagree. I mean, graduation date is affecting our whole community and all our kids.
Right.
And I graduated in a sweaty gym. I mean, it's kinda the memories of it, and others graduated on, my other friends, they graduated on a football field and it was hot, so. But we're really locked in at the Civic Center, unless the Civic Center could give us a couple dates, if we can negotiate that, I may not be opposed, but but Civic Center, I know, needs money, I mean, but, so, they can be flexible, so.
So the Civic Center date is on Tuesday. We're actually the start, the first school that starts their cycle of graduations that they hold there. So like, as you look at that, and I'm not gonna know all of them, but like, I know Augusta goes there, Masalonski goes there. I believe, uh, Halldale goes there. Um, so there's like a cycle and those schools have done it for years and years, so they always get first choice of, do you still want the same date kinda thing? Um, so that's why we're at the front of the line, and they have told us if anyone ever cancels, we can have their slot, that's further back. But again, yeah, I don't think the chances of that happening are really high.
So how do they handle this?
Say that.
I mean, how do they handle this?
Yeah. I know that the, the DOE is really, um, clamping down over the last couple of years with the ability to do remote days. And because of the pandemic and all this, they, they kind of, and I don't wanna like throw them under the bus, but they kinda look the other way. Um, so to speak, they weren't really like saying, okay, we have to follow the law, it's a pandemic, we understand weird things are going on. This year, they've kinda come back to us and said, look, the law is the law, make sure you're following the law. So that's kinda where I realized like we're getting, you know, don't wanna say too much more than that, like, we got a little leeway last year, the way I'm gonna say that from the state. So I understand that we've gotta get back to, we gotta follow the law.
David?
Yeah, I totally agree with Sean, you know, I survived a sweaty graduation, and, um, I don't know, I, I would rather have us have more control over our calendar than be our hands tied by one date in the Republic of Car Savings, too.
Yeah. No, it won't actually, to be quite honest, it's about a wash. What it costs for us to set up the gym, take it down, all that kinda, you know, the extra overtime, the traffic flow, all that kinda stuff. We have custodians that basically work almost a ten or twelve hour overtime every week.
But I would definitely rather have control over the calendar than, so. One, one day, one day is enough, yes.
That's something that's important for people, so.
Tyler?
I was just gonna add that, uh, I've had both my graduations, one at the high school and then my college graduation in the Civic Center, and I think from my perspective as a student, I think it was more meaningful to have it in in the high school gym than in the Civic Center, A, and B, I agree with having the control. I think it's I think just having that control and ability to just move it if we have to move it due to storms, I think that's a flexibility that we need. And it's, it, it may not be a cost saving or a wash, but I think that flexibility in terms of not having to create a district-wide panic, I mean, it's, I'd be willing to vote for the calendar as long as I'd be willing to vote for the calendar as long as graduation's in the high school.
Hold on Sean. So this is getting away from the actual venue of the graduation, but do we have any ability whatsoever to preemptively use one or two of the early release dates and have them be full days? And then if we don't end up needing those extra days, then we have a day or two in our pocket that we could use. Uh, I mean, that's, I, I don't, maybe that's thinking, overthinking it, but.
Yeah.
Kind of vague, a day or two. If, if we really, if we are gonna go to the civic center and we are unfortunately tied to the compliance.
Any other board members have questions or concerns? Okay, I did see a few hands in the audience, I'm gonna start with, um, Doug. You can stand there if I can hear you. Oh, no, nevermind, you have to go there because of the Zoom. Cause they won't be able to hear you.
Uh, Doug Stevens, Mount Vernon again. Jay, I have a question specifically to you. Did you say that you had five days after the graduation to end the last day of school?
Graduation's gotta be within five days of the last student day.
You don't have it because the thirteenth is a Tuesday and you have a full week after Ju-, uh, after June second.
That, yeah.
So you had seven days of school, so you already got two days you need to make up now.
Oh, I'm sorry, I need to.
You're talking about next year?
I don't know, are you talking about this year or last, next year? This year? I said, no.
June four.
June four. June four, yeah. No, it's all good, it's all good.
Sean?
I just wanna just elaborate on the using the Augusta Civic Center and stuff. On my end, wouldn't do it either way, doesn't, but we do have to take in consideration, a lot of times that gym has been over capacity on the, for the fire marshal. That's a lot of reasons why the schools are using other facilities and stuff like that, too. If we fill the bleachers, if we fill the chairs in the center when we put them out, we're over capacity for the fire marshal. So I just want to make sure you guys take that in consideration too. Not every year it's happened, but some years we do go over capacity, depending on the size of class and how many people show up. So I just want to make sure you guys have that in consideration.
And I do know that has been something, the whole idea of tickets can be a sore spot. When you say, when you're looking at a capacity of a gym and you're saying students can only have, and I'm just gonna make up a number, it's not the number, but students can only have four tickets. That is, then becomes stressful for families as well. With the civic center, we don't have to worry about tickets. So again, there's pros and cons, no matter which way you go. But I know in terms of everyone wanting to see, that was a big selling point when we did move to the civic center with the fact that we didn't have to worry about tickets, anybody who wanted to come could come. And there's not, honestly, there's not a bad seat in the house, you guys. Go sit in that gym and you're gonna have people in front of you and you're not gonna see, um, the stage that does happen, so.
Kelsey?
Um, outdoor graduation, is that a thing that people still do, is that weird?
As long as it doesn't rain.
But I do agree, and I, I really do think we should bring graduation back home for the flexibility of it, except we solve a lot of these problems. So should I move or graduation?
I would.
We're still on, we're, right now, we're still on the other motion, we're still.
Yeah. So if, if, I'm gonna, I'm sorry to interrupt you Kathy, if you're going to do that, please table this and let me go back to the high school and have this discussion. Please don't make a vote and say, and I'm saying this honestly, please don't make a vote as a board and say, we're having it at gra-, at the, at the, the school. Let us go back, look at the calendar and come back with that date change for you, please. And that's not an insult to anyone, just please let us, let us do what we need to do.
Patty?
Can we, can, can I amend the current, so we, we're in a, are we in a motion right now to look?
We're in motion.
So can we amend it while it's in motion? Like can we, how do we table this right now? Can we table this and get more information so that?
Are we in motion to approve the calendar?
Yes, we are, yeah, that's.
I would like to table that.
Sean, I just want to hear from Sean.
No.
So are you?
I, well, can I move when we're already moving? I move, we table this calendar conversation until we get more information about what works for the high school and families about graduation. Second.
Any more discussion?
Can we, when you are looking at the calendar, can you find if there's any wiggle room to move the last day closer to graduation? You know, any of the workshops or things be pushed around, you know what I'm saying, so that we have a buffer there?
I feel like moving workshop days is a whole nother conversation.
That needs input from people.
So I think we should just.
We should just let Jay and the administration and the staff.
Right, that's my back to Jay, if you can work with it.
Betty?
This calendar has five days, so into it already for.
No, only two.
Only two?
For, are you talking about this year or next year?
Next year.
Next year. Um, make sure you look at the new one that's in your, um, packet. We did adjust everything, so really there's only two emergency days.
I was looking at the.
Hold, yeah.
But I had looked at the goal, I was looking at the new, but, but I remembered that goal.
Yeah. I don't want to cloud things more, there was one point when I was first year and there was seven emergency, so, like, it's moving target.
Anyone else on the board have any questions or comments? You gotta go back up to the podium.
Doug Stevens, Mount Vernon again. So you said this year, graduation is June fourth.
Uh, excuse me, this year it's June sixth.
Because on the email that I have, it says June, uh, okay, no, when I asked you, you said June four.
Yeah.
So for twenty, for twenty twenty-three.
June sixth.
June sixth, so you're graduating on June sixth, you're graduating on a Tuesday.
Twenty-two, twenty-three, yes. I want to make sure I'm looking at the right calendar.
Okay. I just, I wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
Nothing on the fourth.
Nothing on the fourth this year.
Go ahead.
Barry Skilling, Mount Vernon, my wife was a teacher for thirty-seven years before she passed. Trying to think outside the box, it might be a union question, but can they have a Zoom Saturday? Where the kids would do a Saturday Zoom, that would be a, that would take care of a day. I know when I was a kid, we did that.
Thank you for that suggestion. Okay, so we have a motion on the table to table the motion, the consideration of the cal-, next year's calendar. Any other discussion? Let's vote.
Okay, so we're voting on table. Okay, so we're voting on tabling it. Um, so Kristen?
Yeah.
Uh, David G.
Yes.
Jade?
Yes.
Annie?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Sean? No. Kelsey?
Yes.
David? T, sorry. Um, Esme?
Yes.
And Eric?
Yes.
So twelve yes and one no. Okay, so it passes, okay, great. Okay, so if, if it's okay, give me a couple of weeks and I'll bring it back to you guys if that works for everyone, so that we have time to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next on the agenda, agenda is an update on the morale survey.
So on, uh, page eighteen of twenty-one of your packet, um, we put together an executive summary that we, um, have actually shared with the entire staff, um, going through that. I'm not gonna read all of it to you. Um, one of the things, um, that I do want to draw your attention to, um, is in the, the first chart where it says staff threat areas ranked by highest disagreement. Um, so this is kind of where we looked at what questions generated the most, the, the biggest difference, so to speak, um, in this. And what, how did they align with the threat area that was there? So they basically have six threat areas, so recognition and value, time and resources, professional growth, leadership, trust and values alignment, ownership and input, and then personal safety and belonging. And so, uh, obviously the lower that number is, that means kind of there's less of a problem in that particular area. So a couple of our strengths, um, from the original survey were that, um, people feel safe and they feel like they belong here at Miranda Coats. So I was very proud of that, I think that's a really, um, good celebration to have, as well as the ownership and input. So we worked on having people belong, building relationships and trying to be as collaborative as possible. And that kind of played out with the survey itself, which is something to be proud of, because that's part of what we're known for. Um, things that we needed to work on, uh, recognition and value, time and resources, um, from there. So, and those make sense right now, um, based on a lot of what's going on in the world itself. We did do focus groups, um, that were basically randomly generated. We had, um, fifty-four staff that participated, um, which was about twenty percent, um, of that. And then we summarized that kind of connected their comments to the survey itself. Um, and again, there was some alignment there because the questions we asked, um, again, went back to recognition and value, time and resources, professional growth, and then leadership, trust and values. So this gives us really important information because we sat as a four-person team with, um, myself, human resource director, um, and Dr. Smith sat with me, um, as well as, um, Jill Ford, the association president. We reviewed all of this data together and we were able to say, okay, so what are we gonna focus on? We can't focus on six threat areas, what are the areas that we can focus on? Um, and that's what comes out of, excuse me, uh, the summary. Um, so our next step is to take these threat areas and say, what can we do specifically to address these threat areas? Of, of not feeling appreciated or not feeling valued in the work that you do? What are the time and resources that you're lacking? And how can we get you those things that you need? So professional growth also showed up there, leadership, trust and values alignment. So our next step is to bring together a larger group of, um, uh, staff that will give input on what specific strategies are we going to use to address these particular threat areas? And then we're going to use those strategies for, um, to end the school year as well as to start the next school year. And then we'll start the cycle all over again, because then we'll have some feedback of did these strategies change the, the disagreement values, like it doesn't change what's going on there? So, um, so it's definitely a much bigger process than I anticipated. But, um, working through this process, using this, um, educational advisory board method, it really has kind of honed it down to us as to what do we need to look at to help improve morale, um, across our staff? Um, and recognition and value are obviously always right at the top there and that makes sense based on where we are. Same with time and resources, again, I know we're in budget season, but again, it's, you know, talking about those time and resources, what are the things, um, that, that we're doing with this? So, so we're gonna focus on those, um, um, red areas and we're gonna have a larger group that comes together and we're going to actually have strategies. The next time I come to you guys, I will actually have the strategies we're going to use to finish out the school year and to start the next school year to address these threat areas with staff. Okay, you're very welcome, it, it's, it's been really, really good. I, I have to give our staff a lot of credit, I think they've been very open and honest with us and I think we, we're, we're getting to what's most important to our staff.
Any questions or comments for Jay about the, the survey, about the work that's planned?
I don't have a question about the plan, but I do have a question about twenty percent of, of staff were selected to participate.
Yeah, that was for the focus groups.
Oh, I see.
And we did have.
Oh, seventy-seven percent.
Yeah. It's all good. Yeah.
Anyone else? Sean?
Do, do we, if we have this, I can go find it, did we get a copy of the questions that were asked?
No, but I can share those with you.
Be very interested to see how it was asked.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Oh, I'm gonna write that down so I don't.
It's always interesting questions.
Yeah, could you share that with all of us?
Absolutely.
Any other questions? David?
I just wanted to thank Patty for asking questions, even if it's cleared up more, it's more, it helps me too.
Okay, now we're gonna hear about our introduction to our strategic plan.
So, um, so it's our strategic, five-year strategic plan runs out, um, in January of twenty twenty-four. So it's time for us to start that process one more time, um, working forward from it. The last time we did this was, um, the, the sessions had happened with Dr. Donna Wolf from, and I believe it was twenty eighteen, twenty seventeen? Twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, I think that's.
It was twenty eighteen, cause I was in a.
Oh, perfect, thank you Tyler. Because I know when I came on the executive summary, um, I believe it was Ryan Buzer had done as part of, uh, the work that he was doing, had done the executive summary, and then we built the strategic plan based on that information. You, um, the, we had spent a lot of money on that process. And given the times that we're in now, um, I think, um, I think we can do this ourselves. I don't think we have to outlay seven or eight thousand dollars to put a, a strategic plan together and have an outside consultant coming in. So I modeled my plan after, after, um, Dr. Dolla, who is the superintendent over in Yarmouth. He has this really great process that he shared with me, working forward, where, uh, basically a team of people come together over the course of a year to build this plan and, and we have certain, um, um, deadlines and goals. So what I did was put together what I thought would be, um, a good kind of place to start. I would actually be looking at holding our first meeting on January, or excuse me, on March twenty-ninth, uh, of this year, um, where we would actually start the process. Um, and then you can see everything that we'll do, I tried to lay it out just so that you kind of had a, a view of what it would look like. Then, um, doing this, this kind of strategic, um, planning though, does mean that you have to keep your group to a manageable size. So I did put up, put together, um, a team makeup of kind of my vision of what this would look like. Uh, two district level people leading, um, including myself and the, uh, curriculum, uh, director. Then we'd be looking at having staff, uh, one per building, uh, as a representative for this process. We'd have three administrative staff, um, one from the elementary, one from the middle, one from the high school. Uh, we'd be looking for four board members, one to represent each town. Um, we'd like to invite, um, eight community members, two per town, it's kind of the target there. As well as we would like to, um, uh, invite three, um, students to be part of this as well. Cause I do think student voice is an important piece going forward here. In my mind, it seemed most appropriate that we'd probably be looking at high school students participating in this kind of, uh, of thing. So we would have twenty-five, um, people working on the strategic plan. That doesn't mean you wouldn't have some forums, or we would invite other stakeholders, um, across our communities to come in. We'd be looking to do one in August, right before school starts. We'd be looking to do a second one, um, in December, um, as kind of a second step there, um, so that we can gather as much information as possible. It will mean that I need those twenty-five people to attend as many meetings as possible. I'll need them to, uh, commit to doing, um, meaningful contributions through the discussion process. There's going to have to be a lot of discussion that takes place. Uh, there will have to be some subcommittee work. Um, obviously we're not going to get everything done in the meeting, so there will be times where some subcommittees will have to work together to pull things together. Um, ability to stay focused in our timeline, um, make sure we're hitting, meeting our deadlines and deliverables. And you can see as you kind of look through there, there are certain spots where I wanted things to be able to do first drafts and second drafts, be able to be put in front of people, um, be prepared for the meetings. And then, uh, basically, I think it's really important that we have a future-focused mindset. There's a lot going on in our worlds right now, in our towns, in our communities, in our families. And I think we have to look forward, um, to continue to make Miranda Cook the best district it can be. We need to look forward and not backwards at this time. I think that's really important going forward. Um, and that's not to throw out the baby with the bathwater. It's to say, going forward, what are the most important pieces we need to keep? What can we strengthen and make better, um, going forward? So I have a little, a survey piece, um, so that people who might want to be stakeholders can, uh, sign up and we'll start putting that scene together. So I wanted to put this in front of everyone just so that you knew, number one, it was happening. And number two, I am obviously always open to any suggestions along the way. But I'm going to try to ride a pretty tight ship, um, because I do think we can do this and we don't have to spend a lot of money to do it at this point. So that's why I was kind of chose to go with this route, um, because I think it's a little more economical. Um, and I think honestly, we can get really good participation, um, especially like that.
Anybody have any questions for Jay?
Either way, you know, bringing in an outside coordinator or whatever, or this, it would still require participation, require power effort, put into it. So we're not getting away with it.
Annie?
The link.
I will put that in as soon as the, the proof, I will put it in. I was like, I'm not going to put it there because somebody will click on it right away. So, um, what I will do is push all of this information out and it will include the link so that people can sign up to be part of that committee.
So who will that go to?
I would send it to the whole wide world. Plus I will also put, uh, copies in all of the town offices as well.
Okay, I just want to have community members, uh, would be able to get this and get the link and be able to sort of manage, make sure that we have all stakeholders covered.
Oh, absolutely. We may even go recruiting if necessary, so.
Any other questions? Sean?
I mean, I'm fine being, trust everyone's fully capable of doing this. We've had multiple conversations of people being tapped and the work they have to do and things not getting done because people are busy. So I just don't want you to be strapped. I'll leave it at that. I'll trust you. But if there has been things, I heard it from, you know, that said aren't getting done because people are strapped. So I just think we need to be careful because we still need to operate.
I think we need to keep that in mind as we're moving.
If there are things we need to hire people for, I think we need to do it.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
I will get it out and of course, by beginning of next week, it will be out.
So next on the agenda is the legislative update. So I sent you all the latest bills that are, uh, being presented to the Ed Committee. Uh, I don't know if you had a chance to look at them or not. There's a lot there. Um, and there are a lot more coming. So the ones that we met on yesterday, I didn't have a chance to, um, put them in the form because it's a PDF and I can't write on it. So I have, that's why I have to send you the email with what the information is. But if you have any, um, questions about any of these bills or the reasons why MSBA took the position that they took, hopefully I can give you that information. One of the kind of general reasons that we oppose some of these bills is because a lot of times these bills take away local control. And we are really very focused on keeping local control as opposed to the state giving us all these mandates that we have to do. So I had a question about, uh, one of the bills was to have high school students start at eight thirty. And we opposed that because we really felt that that was taking away local control. So if we want to do some of these things as a district, we can. We don't need to be told by the state that we have to do all of it. They tell us enough. Anyway, if anyone has any questions on any of these, you can email me, you can ask me now, you can, you can look at, hopefully those links are live and you can go right on to the, each of those bills and read all the summaries that, that we put together that explain what the bills mean and who, who, um, is sponsoring the bills and all that. And we can always, um, if you want to testify, again, I'll just say we can always, um, get in touch with the Ed Committee. Yeah, it's right on the website. You can see who's there, their emails are there. You can send them emails. You can go and testify in front of them if you want to add hearings. Hearings that are coming up. Okay, so this week the hearings that are coming up are for LD six thirty-five, which is. I may have to look that one up. I didn't write it down. You do know there are almost two hundred bills going through the Ed Committee that we have to talk about and think about. And I think one of the reasons for that is because there's a lot of freshman, um, legislators right now and they want make like these great changes. So I don't know what that bill is, but anyway, that's the hearing, Sean, you know who it is. And then Thursday, there is another hearing on LE, LD one hundred, which is to, um, make it, uh, mandatory for private schools to undergo the same audit that public schools have to undergo. So that's a hearing that, um, is also coming up this week. So any other questions? I would be happy to try to answer. Okay. Now we'll move on to the budget.
So Diane's got the slideshow and she's going to put it up here. We're going to, tonight, here from Ryan Meserve, who will talk about the special education budget. And Sean Drinkwater is here to talk about the facility budget. And we will review, um, the COVID grants for, uh, lacking the better way to say that. We'll, we'll show you where we stand with those. Um, and then we'll follow that up with the update, uh, um, and, uh, first draft of the budget. Um, and then we can go with the discussion questions and comment period. So, um, as Diane's getting it ready, Ryan, if you'd like to head up, you, you'll be first up.
I think I just have one slide in there right there. Unless Sean wants to go first. All right. Uh, so for this budget cycle, I tried to focus on being able to plan for the unknown, which happens a lot in special education, um, but also prepare for the future. Uh, so based on initial conversations with various partners such as child development services, uh, parents, communication, and other stakeholders, um, we're anticipating a potential need for one more added district placement, which is reflected in this budget proposal, um, at the cost of approximately eighty thousand. Uh, this is due to a student who's scheduled to be moving in that's already placed in such a program. And we're planning for that need accordingly. Uh, in addition, we're also looking to continue the relationship with University of Southern Maine and our school psychology practicum placement, uh, for next year, but this time in a full-time internship capacity. Uh, the statewide, uh, recommendation through that program is that, uh, we pay a stipend for that position. And that's reflected in here at the cost of approximately thirty thousand. Uh, all other major budget requests, curricular, technology, et cetera, uh, should be able to be covered with existing funds, federal or local. Uh, it's important to note, and I said this at the beginning, kind of, um, that special education, uh, is often a moving target. Uh, we're bound by a lot of service students. Um, any students who move in, even if there is a high cost, a high need, or, um, an extensive amount of programming um, associated with their individualized education programs or IEPs. Oftentimes those students' transfers don't typically occur, uh, or are known at this time. They happen in July or August, September, October, whenever. Um, and that's usually after the budget has been settled. Uh, for example, a few years ago, we had twenty-eight students with IEPs move in. And we only had three move out. Usually there's a balance. Sometimes there's not. So that's, uh, the, obviously something that, um, takes, um, flexibility and, and, uh, programming for. Um, but the staff throughout the entire district, they do a great job at being flexible. If you look at, um, the programs or you have questions about kind of how we have things allocated throughout the various schools, we obviously have some small elementary schools and then larger schools, uh, then we try to make sure that we, um, staff and program for those flexibly so that we can handle, um, any unanticipated students that move in. And, um, you know, for the past many years, um, we have been able to do that. So that's been successful. Uh, just to recap, so the main things that I am requesting is an additional added district placement. Uh, that does include the transportation component, uh, and then also to continue the school psychology intern, um, but in a full-time capacity. And that certainly would allow us, um, a fair amount more re- resources to have that. Um, and it's something that I think when I talked about at the beginning to look towards the future, I think it's something that we really need to promote in this state and be able to support too, um, so that we can have, um, more people coming into that profession and field since it is a, a critical need in the state. Uh, if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy, happy to answer any parts of these requests or any other parts of the special education budget.
Amy? Am I right in thinking that, uh, psychologists are difficult to find? So, and a side effect perhaps of having this intern is to have that, uh, additional skill and capability in our district without possibly hopeless search to find one.
Well, we currently have a full-time school psychologist who's great. Um, and we are able to hire her years ago, um, a couple of years ago. Uh, prior to that, we had a school psychologist that was here eighteen-something years. Um, and that isn't always the case that you have someone that stays that long. Um, she retired unfortunately. But, uh, it was hard initially to find a school psychologist. I think the first time, and that was during, right at the start of COVID, so that didn't help that we started doing Zoom interviews for that. But, um, I think we only had one applicant at that time. There's a critical need throughout the state. You know, in particular for that. So I think it's, it's important for us. There's a lot that can be done, uh, with that added resource for us next year, but it's also something that I think just, um, as a point of process, it's not always easy for those, uh, students to find practical placements. And, you know, I'd like to be able to support that as well.
Um, can you, I'm in complete support of the school psychology internship program at USM. Um, and building those relationships, I think is great. So thanks to you and to your school psychologist for doing that work of, um, supervising. What roughly number of referrals a year do you, and you might have it off the top of your head. Um, but about how many referrals do the school psychologists or does the school psychologist, um, in R C thirty-eight get?
Uh, just to clarify, are you talking about new referrals? Are you talking about referrals for evaluation in general? Yeah, I mean, COVID has certainly, it's, we've seen an uptick since then. Um, and for us, we're not a, a huge district. So one school psychologist, um, you know, has been, uh, able to meet that need for the most part. I'd say right now we're running forty-five to sixty, really depends on the year. Um, you know, we have, I think, eighteen pending new referrals right now. So there's a, a large uptick right now. We're getting back to what I would consider more normal process. And a lot of those students during the COVID time that, um, there might've been questions about whether it was COVID-related academic, um, progress or whether it was something that might be of an underlying disability concern. Those, um, were a little clouded at that point. I think they're taking more clarity now. So we're seeing an uptick in some referrals um, across the, but I think the most we've had one year was seventy. Um, and for us, that's a fair amount. And that doesn't include, I would consider those ones that include more extensive evaluations, not ones that could be, um, not ones that, um, don't require as much during the reevaluation process. And that's just through the school psychologist. So we also have all the reevaluations for the students who receive speech primarily. You know, and typically the school psychologist isn't involved in those, but, um, yeah, I'd say fifty plus at this point. We had sixty one time during COVID. That was a fair amount.
Um, so just one more quick question. Does, um, would that include, and these are pretty rare, um, I, I think probably, um, but five oh four evaluations, um, that districts are required to do, that would also include any of those, right?
Yeah, in a lot of the logistics of those, sometimes it depends on usually if there's a question around eligibility, those five oh four questions are usually wrapped into a special education referral. And then the evaluation process, you know, would take one track or another depending on the results of it.
Okay, so that's rolled in.
Ryan, could you just explain to the board what the school psychologist actually does?
Well, I didn't bring all my talking points on the different pillars that they can cover.
Position really means for our district.
So in our district, um, and they can do a lot more than this. So I don't want to shortchange a school psychologist and all the various things that they can do. Um, but primarily for us, it's identification and evaluation, um, and then meaningful consultation to the special educators or to the staff regarding any programming, uh, for the students. They can do other things as well. Um, they can do other evaluations or assessments that would be, you know, supportive to the school community. I know, um, that's happened in the, in the past too. They can have, you know, an arm in some of the multi-tiered systems of support, um, teams, uh, and things like that. Uh, but primarily just, and I know this is one of the national concerns from the school psychologists is there are so many things that they could be doing, but just the capacity of the number of evaluations, which are the, the timeline compliance, stupid things, those take up a lot of their time. So, you know, in a given week, and I think I said this before years ago, um, and the school psychologist isn't at all these meetings, but I do close to four hundred formal IEP meetings a year myself. And a lot of those are evaluation or referral meetings, uh, whether it's a step one meeting or a step two meeting, and the school psychologist is, is involved in those two. And then there's follow-up conversations. And then if we determine a student eligible, a lot of times the school psychologist is helping give recommendations on, you know, what academic programmings might make the most sense for the, the learning profile of the student. And sometimes they're involved in bigger picture, um, programmatic discussions, um, as well. So, um, you know, there's a large part that they can do and they can do more, not that they should do more. Um, and I'm not asking them to do that or stating that, um, in case the school psychologist is watching tonight, but, um, but there, there is a lot that they can do.
Thank you. Annie? A quick question. So for eligibility, I know that the school psychologists can do a psychological evaluation, um, as the school psychologist, but because their workload is so intense, would you ever go by an outside psychological evaluation and use that for eligibility purely without having to also have the school psychologist.
Really, I mean, a lot, this, and given a lot of things, but it depends. I think there are certain things that we really need to look at the school-based impact of them. So typically we're looking at things that are, if there is an outside evaluation, we're taking that into consideration fully and using that to the extent we can. But, um, a lot of times, you know, there are other components that we would have to supplement or add to that, but it's, wouldn't be as extensive, as it might typically be from start to finish without anything else.
The other thing I would add to that, Annie, is, um, often parents come to schools because they will say, the waiting list for a school, for a psychological evaluation for my son is, you know, eighty-five months and you guys have to do it within forty-five school days. So you are it. And, you know, that's, it's impacting their school performance. That's a good thing that they come to the school, but, um, you know, those are tough to find, the outside of that.
Yeah. Any other questions for Ryan? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Sean? Sean is.
No, we didn't forget you.
Okay. So I'm just going to read down through every school like I do every year. I keep, I keep saying every year, I'm going to work with Diane and get it on the screen and I never do, never get the time, but. Okay, so we'll start with Manchester Elementary. Uh, I've got in the budgets this year for painting, uh, five thousand dollars. Uh, we have some tire repair that we have to do this year down there. Uh, it's not doing the whole parking lot. There's been some places that it broke up. That was twelve thousand dollars. Uh, a time clock cable is eight hundred dollars. And just in case you guys are going to ask what the time clock cable is, we're working in the, in the thing. And just in case you guys are gonna ask what the time clock cable is, we're working in the in the thing, Manny's working. With putting in time, like a time clock that people punch in, punch out, so we have to run a wire to each one of these clocks. Faucet replacement, twenty five hundred, that's the lead copper testing that we had done, that has to get done, no, no matter what. Uh, I got down for some carpets at Manchester for ten thousand dollars each year. I've been doing a couple rooms. I'd like to keep going. Sewer drain repairs, this winter we had the sewer plug down there outside. It's pretty bad. The drain's not broken, but it needs to be flushed, dispensed years and years. I haven't done it since I've been here. So it needs to be done, so we need to get it flushed, cleaned out. For a total of thirty five thousand eight hundred from Manchester. Uh, Mount Vernon, painting five thousand. Uh, we have a roof drain that we need to repair, that's two thousand. A transfer switch for nine thousand. And I'll just elaborate on the transfer switch in. Mount Vernon, Reed Field Elementary and Wayne Elementary, I put in to have transfer switches put in so that. We can put a generator when we lose power. I can take a generator from here on a trailer, go up, plug it in, they can keep going. And this generator would run all three elementaries. So that's what I'd like to do that, so that's why I have that in there. That's what the transfer switch is. Next year, I'll put in the budget. If I'm allowed to do this, I'll put in next year to get the generator, and then I would have the whole thing. Uh, time clock cable, eight hundred. Uh, I put in for a new sign down to Mount Vernon for four thousand dollars. And faucet replacement there was thirty five hundred dollars for a total of twenty four thousand three hundred. Wayne Elementary, the painting is five thousand. We have some trim repair that I've been trying to do. I never get it done, but we just keep working on it. That's six thousand. Time clock cable down there was a thousand. Uh, we'd like to. The town office will be moving out, I think, in April, is it April day, April, May? I can't remember.
Well, hopefully there, yeah, the, it's May.
May is when it's right, and if they do, we would like to tile the town office for the classrooms. We need to put a new wall for near the coffee room to split that off. That's twelve hundred dollars. Uh, playground chips, uh, it's twenty five hundred dollars. Correct me, Manny, the town will, they'll split that with me, correct? What was with that? Yep. Transfer switch down there was nine thousand. Faucet replacements, eighteen hundred. And the gym lights, we've replaced, I think, three, three or four gym lights, they're going bad. They don't make the ballast for them anymore, so I've been replacing with LEDs as we've been going, so I'd like to finish those off and get the whole gym done. And that's twenty five hundred for a total of forty one thousand. Reed Field Elementary, painting is five thousand. Uh, we're gonna put a new fence for thirty five hundred, and it was a lot more than that, but the company has donated a lot of time and materials. Jeff Boston found, there's somebody you know, I think, or something like that, found the person, that was great. I always say free is good, so, yeah. Carpet say, we've done a couple every year and I like to keep going there for the classrooms, that was ten thousand. Bathroom stalls, he's got some stalls that need some updating there for seventy five hundred. There's a parking lot extension that Jeff would like to have done. It's a big project that was twenty eight thousand. Transfer switch for the generator was nine thousand, time clock cable was eight hundred. Faucet replacement there was twenty five hundred, and office A C was sixteen thousand to have the front office, Jeff's office. And the. Is it a conference room now? Yep, the conference has been changed so many times, but the conference room, it'll do all three of those, so they have A C. For a total of eighty two thousand three hundred. The middle school, we got the painting for five thousand. The dumpster rental for three thousand, and the dumpster rental every year is to clean the basement, that everything gets put in all year long and we. Clean some out so we can keep putting stuff, more stuff back in. Uh, lunch tables, we need to get a couple new lunch tables. And those are ungodly expensive, unreal, but those are four thousand. Two new doors here in the middle school for ten thousand. Those are ungodly expensive. Carpet repair here, I got a spot in the bottom down here, it needs to be replaced, be fixed, it's four thousand. The gym floors, that's three thousand that we do every year, time clock cable, twelve hundred. We'd like to get two new cameras in the foyer, and that was five thousand just to have those two new cameras. Uh, faucet replacement, fifteen hundred, uh, A C and Norm's I T office, seventy five hundred. He used to have the A C on the roof, that's the one that went, we, that has to happen because he has to have A C in with the, his stuff. And the plumbing for Dixie's room is sixty eight hundred. For a total of fifty one thousand at the middle school. The high school, painting five thousand, gym floors is thirty eight hundred, they need a couple lunch tables for four thousand. We have a gym fan in the gym that has died, there's three in there total. And they have to do staging to replace them, and I'm like, if we're gonna do one, the original, let's do all three. Why they have a stage in everything, that was four thousand dollars for the gym fans. Uh, the time clock cable was a thousand, siding repair, ten thousand. Has anybody gone around the back of the high school? Has anybody seen the back of the high school for the siding? It looks great. My team did a great job. We need to keep doing that every year. Uh, faucet replacement, thirty eight hundred, and I would like to get four new doors. Twenty nine thousand two hundred ninety dollars for four doors. I, it's just, these prices this year are astronomical. The high school total was sixty thousand eight hundred ninety dollars. The bus garage, painting for five thousand, the time clock cable for fifteen hundred. Brick repair for five thousand, and. I've got in here for Kelly to move her office into the P D C, we're gonna build her a little office, cut a hole in the cement wall. For window for seven thousand, for the bus garage total for eighteen thousand five hundred. Central office, uh, there's gonna be a few things going on down there this year, so I put two thousand for painting. I'd like to get some painting done down there in a few of the rooms. And the time clock cable for eight hundred, the central office was twenty eight hundred. And then for my equipment, uh, my regular vacuums, I need two, two eighteen inch vacuums for twenty four hundred, two fourteen inch vacuums for twenty two hundred. Uh, I've got in for the camera upgrade. That's the inside cameras in the high school, middle school, we have some that run twenty four seven. They, they're not, they're supposed to work, correct me if I'm wrong, Diane, they're supposed to work as you walk by, but. And they're taking up space on our hard drives and all this stuff. Anyways, to do a whole camera grade, it was thirty thousand dollars to to replace them all. I have in here for a company truck over four years for seventeen thousand five hundred a year. I have two maintenance guys now, which is nice. They use their trucks to haul the trailer and stuff like that, and insurance don't cover them hauling the trailer with their pickups. So if I'm gone with my pickup, they can't go in a way, so they gotta wait till I come back to get my. So with two, two pickups, plus that gives me an extra truck if my plow breaks or whatever. Uh, so it'd be nice to be able to get one more truck, and that's nothing fancy. The the price of pickups have gone through the roof for three quarters on track. I couldn't believe it, that's the minimum. Uh, I've got for some speakers, thirty five hundred, and that is some of the elementaries. Some of the other schools, I've got some speakers that don't work in certain areas. I'd like to start replacing them, put new ones in for the intercom. Uh, and some emergency lights for three thousand. We have some emergency lights right now that run off car batteries still. And a car battery now is almost two hundred dollars, I use. And they have the lithium ion batteries now, like the one behind the wall, they, they're so small, they're forty, fifty dollars and they last longer than the car battery. So I'd like to start upgrading my, some of those lights. Then my equipment total is fifty eight thousand six hundred in the budget for this year, so for that. That's enough.
Does anyone have any questions, Sean? Sean?
So are the doors? Exactly, for safety, weather?
Uh, the high school doors, they've been kicked, banged, trashed with balls, they're all folded. I, I can't put enough weather stripping on them to keep the, the air out. And so I had O M P come in to give me pricing. Of course, if this passes, I would get quotes anyways, but this is just their price. Holy, it's just, it's ungodly, the price, I was shocked on the price of doors. That's with all the hardware and everything too, that's completely everything new.
Oh, I just know when it gets to crunch time.
Yeah, and believe me, we've been putting weather strip right to it and it's making it so thick and just trying to keep the air out, but. And sometimes you can walk nearby and still see the, see right on through them.
Christine? Um, the parking lot extension at Reed Field Elementary, um, what's the, I am not familiar enough with the area.
So when you pull into Reed Field Elementary, they have parking in the front parking lot, but off to the left hand side where the ball field is, there's a section there we'd like to dig out. And put gravel in there so that the people that are parking on the lawn and ball field now in the summer stuff, they'll have a parking lot there. This is not with tire either, this is just the gravel for this year. Then we'd have to, and then that is, that is running electrical line over, but no lights yet or anything like that, but I wanted to make sure we had electrical there so that we could put parking lot lights in later.
Thank you, and thank you so much for the comprehensive needs assessment. That's a lot of information.
Now, Seth, anybody Tyler or Jade have any questions?
Okay.
What? They good?
Yeah, I said, no, I don't. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
So Diane, if you can put that last slide up with the bonded COVID grants overview, just. So that people can see kind of where we are with those as well. So again, the bond has been gone for a year now, so I did. Remove, I did leave it in the title, but just so that people are aware, we don't, we've expended all of our bond funds, and we're totally done with that. We are just working on repeating it now, so, so the S R one, the C R F one, C R F. Two, those grants all basically were used in the, the, the first year of the pandemic. Um, those have all been expended, closed out, reimbursed, all that kind of stuff. The only two open grants that we have left are after two. Um, and we say S R three, but that's the A R P. The official designation is A R P, so. S R two needs to be completely spent by the end of September this year. So what we did is we went in and we kind of cleaned it up and made sure that all of those grant positions that we have in there. Um, we're covered with this grant and with the S R three grant for school year twenty three. The last major expenditure that we'll have in S R two will be the literacy curriculum, which. They're working through a process of reviewing those curriculums right now, but we have to have that spent and ordered and paid for. And in our hands before the grant runs out, which will be at the end of September, so we're in that process right now of. Doing that review so that hopefully we can hit our timeline of in the summer. Being able to place our order for that curriculum material, the literacy curriculum material at the elementary schools. The S, um, excuse me, S R three. Um, we will be using, again, we had some grant permissions that we covered for this year in there. We will have summer school covered for twenty three, which is this year, July of this year. And then because the grant runs out in September twenty four, we will be able to cover summer school in twenty four as well. Um, so again, in not this year, but in the very near future, we're gonna have to talk about what we want to do with summer school. Because we've been using that grant money to fund that for basically the last four years, so. Or it'll be four years total, so we will hopefully have a sustainable model that we'll be able to bring to the board. In twenty twenty four, going into the twenty twenty five school year, so. So that's kind of where we are with the S R grant, so we are kind of chipping away at those funds and using them. Uh, for the projects that we said we would use them for, so just wanted to give you guys an update of where those ones were. Because I know people like to know, so, very clear, so. If it's okay, Kathy, I'm gonna jump right into the updates. We had said to you guys that we would have a first draft. Of the budget to you guys, so we are going to, Donna's got them and she's going to send them around. I'll wait for them to get in your hands. And give you guys a little bit of information with that first one before you start discussion, so.
Can Donna email them as well?
Yeah. Donna, we need two more. Oh, there's the extras, we got extras, thank you. So the, what you're looking at, or anyone that's new looking at the budget, is the overview of the budget. Um, by our cost centers that we then have to vote on. Um, so when you look at it, and again, I don't have my glasses, so if I mispronounce or, or. Say the wrong heading, please bear with me. As you're looking at your cost centers, you can see it starts with twenty twenty one, what was expended, what was budgeted. Followed by twenty two, what was expended, budgeted, and then. Um, where we are year to date in twenty two, twenty three, what's expended, and then what the proposed budget is. Um, is FY twenty four proposed budget, and then that last column. Before the percentage is what is the change in the monetary value, what's the change in that particular. Um, article, and then of course you see the percentage of how much each of those cost centers is up. So I know one of the things people look at is they will go to the very bottom where it says grand total, they will go all the way across the page. And they will go to that next to last column and they will say, wow, your budget is up two million, a little over two million dollars. Um, and then they'll look over and say, ten point twenty three percent. Are you crazy? So, people, I mean, this is kind of what budgeting is all about. Um, so this number represents all of the information that we talked about going forward here with the presentations. With the grant funded positions, all of that stuff is included here, so what you're basically seeing is the max it potentially could be. Um, we all realize that ten point twenty three is probably not a palatable number to the board or our communities. Um, so we're actually going to, the A team is going to be meeting every Friday, and we're going to be having those hard conversations. To bring recommendations to this board at the next meeting as to how do we make adjustments in the budget and what do those adjustments look like? Um, whether they're in or out, you know, that kind of thing. But what we really want to do is make sure that you guys have options when you're looking at this. Um, as you're making decisions and giving us guidance on what we're doing with this. So just to frame it a little bit more for you guys, last year, we were up over ten percent at this very same time. So again, we may go, whoa, that's a huge number, but last year, this is where we were. We, if you guys remember, last year we were able to get it down to five point, I think it was six, sixty percent. Um, so we almost cut it completely in half last year from where we started. Um, so we know we can get this number down, we know we're gonna have to have some hard conversations, and we know. Bringing recommendations to you guys on what we can support in discussions. With all of our stakeholders going forward with this, so that's what the next step of the process is. Um, so every board meeting from here on forward, you're going to get an update of the budget. And we will talk about, do you want to keep this in? Do you want to keep this out? Do you want to reduce by a certain percentage? Do you want to, you know, reduce by a certain dollar amount? And we can talk about those cost center areas as to the targets we want to kind of take a look at there. So a couple of things for you, and then I'll just open it up, a couple more things, so bear with me, I apologize, I'm just gonna give it to you all now and then. And then go from there. So the cost center where you see Article ten, operation, maintenance of plant. Um, the S R O needs, if we decide to keep the S R O in the budget. Um, the S R O needs, if we decide to keep the S R O in the budget, this is where it's currently budgeted. Um, so when you look across and you say, wow, his budget's up like twenty one percent, like what's going on? That's because if we have an S R O, this is the line we have to budget it in because it's about school safety. So it goes in the facilities line, so I just want you guys to kind of know where some, why some of the numbers look, um, really big. Under school admin, uh, on Article eight, um, where it says school admin, again, that one seems to be a little bit higher. And that's because if we're going to keep the, um, elementary, the extra elementary principal, that's where it needs to be budgeted as well, so again, you're seeing. Those areas a little bit higher, but again, it's, a lot of it has to do with positional, um, you know, salaries, benefits, that's that kind of thing. Um, going forward, um, so as you're looking at this, there'll be a lot of things that we will, um. Be taking a look at, um, again, we don't know our insurance number, we built in fifteen percent in our insurance number. Typically, we've done ten percent, but we're really worried because that number's gonna come in late, so we. Built a little bit of a bigger cushion in, and again, that's a, a significant amount of money going forward as well, so, um. But you're basically looking at, if we kept everything as is, this is what it would look like, um, and we know we need to work it down. And I know my administrative team, I apologize, everyone. Uh, my administrative team, um, knows that we have to have some hard conversations and make some hard recommendations to you guys. Going forward, but we'll do that, and and we will get through this, we were able to do it last year, we'll be able to do it this year, so. So, discussion.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Nope.
Uh, the insurance wasn't with mine, it's probably very clear, and I just missed.
Oh, do it again, David, I'm sorry.
The insurance.
When you're talking health insurance, it's multiple lines because.
Oh.
Your, your staffing in across the board, so every line is impacted.
Yeah.
Cause your, your regular instruction line would be like your regular classroom teachers. Your, um, special ed line again would be your special ed teachers, and you know, all of the special ed. Um, ed techs as well, and the same with your operations line, you're talking your custodians, you know, and stuff like that, so every single line. Is essentially impacted by both, um, insurances for medical and dental.
Thank you, Mandy.
You're welcome.
Patty?
I saw on the slide, sorry, Sean, that Sean put up, um, that energy was part of it, do, and maybe I missed something, but do we know already? I haven't heard about that specifically here, is, do we know yet or not yet?
We don't, our, um, electricity costs were locked in for one more year. Um, so we didn't do a significant increase on that. Um, but we did factor in. A fair increase on fuel, just because we don't know, and last year it was pretty high, we didn't go as high as last year. Um, we're hoping to be, you know, we, we did twenty percent. So, um, yeah, that's not significant.
Any other questions?
Yeah, so. He, when it comes to the increase to the taxpayer, and I correct, I believe I'm correct. Even if we didn't increase it all, isn't because the required mill rate from the state is up? From one, I don't know, I just had this whole conversation together, hey, and so, Mel, Representative Mel, who's a master of the stuff.
Yeah.
It, it's off, so even if we were at zero, isn't our, the, the amount the taxpayer's gonna pay off? Because the state's required mill rates up.
Yeah, absolutely right.
So we also gotta keep that on, yes.
Yeah, the required mill went from seven point one to seven point two now.
Yeah, I was gonna, yeah, so.
Doesn't sound like much, but when you're looking at the budget.
It's about six hundred and some odd thousand dollars for RC thirty eight, one point two million for.
Yeah.
For Turner, RC fifty two. Some, it's over three million.
Yeah.
Um, I can ask another question?
Go ahead.
So I know you said the S R O was in there, but that's only like a hundred and twenty thousand of the six hundred, so is that heating oil in the maintenance line and that stuff?
Oh, that stuff is in that line, yes.
And then transportation's up like thirteen point nine two, is that salaries and stuff?
We actually, yeah, we haven't even done the bus driver.
Right, I know that. I've been asking.
Yeah.
That also, um, just to clarify, Sean, on the transportation. That also has to do with the fact that, um, I don't know if you, some of you may remember when Kelly came last year and talked about. Some of the new online software that we have, so some of that software was originally paid for out of grant fund. And we're now having to absorb that cost, so that's roughly, I think, twenty one thousand of that cost.
So like the IDs that make it breaks every other week.
Yeah, the traverse, I think it's called, and Tyler.
Tyler, right, yeah, yeah, that's the route map.
Yeah, so that cost is off.
Thank you.
Patty?
Where, where is Diane, hi Diane, where is, um, like the tech, is the tech in regular instruction? Is the technology, so I think Mandy can.
It's actually in, uh, a couple of different spots, um, most of it is in Article six, sorry.
Okay.
My contact.
I'm getting to that. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board? Oh, it looks like Tyler.
Why did debt service payments go to zero for this budget?
That's, that's local only debt, that's not the bond, that's.
Okay.
Only debt. Finished paying off local only this year.
Okay.
So that, that did go down.
Any other questions? Okay, so on the citizen, um, signup sheet, I have Tara. She's still, is she still here? Oh, there she is, she can come up now.
Um, thank you. So I, should I move this? I'm Tara Wicks, I, I should move it down, yeah. How's that, is that better? Okay, um, I am the school counselor for Mount Vernon and Wayne Elementary Schools. And I have worked in the district for, um, about eighteen years. So. I felt like I wanted to, I came last, at to the last meeting also, and I felt like I wanted to actually say something. Tonight, um, and be here if you have any questions. Um, I have a concern that you don't hear enough from the people that actually work with children in the district. And, um, so I wanted to just give you that opportunity and also to. Highlight some of the information that the counselors have given you, um, in the letters that we sent to the board. The, the first thing I wanted to say is that our mission is, or I, I think that's what we call it, right? The mission statement is to be a caring school community that, um, is dedicated to excellence. And I think that's awesome, that's great. I think that unfortunately, a lot of lately, the excellence part has really, um. overrun the caring part, and. If you come from my lens, that you can't get excellence unless people feel cared for. Um, children need to be taken care of, and they need to be cared for, and then they will be able to be in a place where they can learn. And so in order to do that, it's such a domino thing, in order to do that, you need to. Have people there that can do it for them, like the, those counselors and the nurses and the jobs that. Um, we were finally able to acquire through the grant funding. Um, and also to have those jobs and those support people there to support the teachers. Um. So as I was sitting here, it was all kind of connecting because the morale survey says that. Teachers aren't, you know, they're not feeling recognized and valued or getting their resources and the time they need, and part of it is because they're doing a million different jobs. That other people could be doing if we were staffed. Well. Um, and so, you know, when I'm in the building all the time, I can. You know, do the little running around about what kids need, their shoes and their, and their, um, tissues and their food. This morning, I, you know, fed kids breakfast first thing in the morning and, and that kind of thing, or if they had like. Rough recesses, and so the teachers don't need to do all that all the time. And they can focus on their teaching, which is their skill set, right? Um, so I feel like it's very much connected, and I really, as you go into making decisions about the budget. Really consider that, the morale survey is connected to the way you budget and what you support in this district. And that excellence is not gonna happen unless you take care of the basic needs of people. Um, having said that, the other thing I actually wanted to really share with you, because I do this with my students. Is the idea of equity versus everything being equal. And when things are equal, everything's the same, like, um. So, you know, like, if you, Ryan, can I use your permit? I want the visual, yeah, so. You know, like you guys can see him way better, right? If it was going to be equitable, you'd give me a stool. Then we are at the same height, right now it's just equal, we're both on the same ground. Right, if we're gonna have a meal, you know, like. Uh, half a piece, a half a sandwich would be great for me, is that gonna work for Ryan?
Probably two.
Probably not, right, right, so, so equal would be we each get half a sandwich, but it's not what we both need. Right, I don't need to. Ryan, okay? I mean, that is just like such a, like, and so when you start to think about schools and, and what they need, I really, you know. Want you to take that into consideration, because it may not look the same for every single school or building. Um, this, the chart that we shared with you guys, if you've looked at it, it's very clear. That even though the numbers in some of the buildings are less, are smaller, the needs are higher. So that means we need, you know, we need just as much, if not more, support in those buildings, even though the student population is lower. It's a hard thing to wrap your brain around, but it really, I think, is pretty clear by the numbers. Um, and I'm be glad to like answer questions or talk to anybody at any time. Um, and my last comment, since I've been in the district for a while and I've lived through it. And I feel like I couldn't sleep at night if I didn't say something about the principalship at Wayne. And I, I worked most of my time at Wayne with a part time principal. Um. And it has been for different people over the last, whatever years. And not until it was full time did it feel right. And so it's not the person necessarily, you know, everybody tries to do it really, you know, they're wonderful people, they try really hard. You gotta be in the building, and when somebody's finally in that building, that makes all the difference, and the kids, it's the, the stability, kids are being cared for. And everything rose from there, having that full time principal is just. It's like, Jay likes to use this term, and I'll use it, it's a game changer, it has changed everything out there. Um, and I've lived through it, and if you want more specifics, I'll be glad to let you know how I feel about it, but. So that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you. Don't know, is there anyone else that signed up on the budget note? Okay. We have any more discussion on the board about anything concerning the budget? No more discussion?
It's not as bad as I thought.
It's all churning in here, wait till next week.
Yeah.
Okay, so the last thing on our agenda before we adjourn is to review our norms, and. I decided that because I didn't ask anybody to do it this week, I'll do it myself. I got to remember to do that, so the first one we have is to keep kids at the center. I think we did a pretty good job with that tonight, I think we're, you know, when we're talking about the graduation, and I think we really need to think about where the kids want. Their graduation, because it really is their graduation, I think we did a good job with that. Um, we said that we would act consistently within our commonly held core values, I think we, we did okay with that, we were respectful to each other, and we listened to each other. We shared our ideas, and, um. We tried to make sure that everyone had a chance to speak before someone else said something again, so we just want to make sure that everybody. Gets us a chance to say anything, and we really were, um, assuming positive intent, so when people say things. We, we said that we really want to make sure that we're coming at listening. With the assumption that people are always coming from a positive intent, and I think we did that. And we listened openly to all opinions and possibilities to really understand what other people are saying, which is, which is a really important thing to do. And we just really respected each other, we didn't interrupt, we didn't disagree on too many things, one, one or two things maybe, but that's okay. It's good to disagree, because then we get that conversation going. And we all had a positive tone of voice and positive body language. So I thank you all very much for sticking to our norms tonight in a great way, so. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn?
Second.
All those, do we have to do the roll call?
No, we're now.
We're adjourned.